Thursday, December 5th, 2019 to order. The first item on the agenda are the minutes of November 15th, 2019. Does anyone have any comments or corrections?
I do have a couple of edits under the school committee's notes. So on page three, in the first paragraph, this is where we were discussing about the test prep. So where it's six line down, she said that the company had reached out directly to students. It was that guidance had reached out directly to students as well as parents.
Students and their parents.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was all I had. Yeah, that's all.
Anyone else? Okay, so I have a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Schedule payments is going around. Next one, authorize school committee chair to sign MSBA project scope and budget agreement. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Because the chair's here, I didn't know.
No.
Okay, go right ahead.
The chair of the school planning.
The chair of the school planning committee. So as a result of our last school planning committee meeting, we are asking if you can authorize the school committee chair to sign the most recent document that has to go to the MSBA, which is the project scope and budget agreement. It is a boilerplate template from the MSBA for the most part, and then the town has also reviewed it. There are several signatures to be had from the select board to your committee, to school planning, to committee, myself, but we are, or we as the school planning committee are asking if you could authorize the chair to sign that. There will be a future question to ask if you will authorize the chair to sign other agreements that are going to the MSBA because they will be happening with some frequency. And as you know, in a project like this, when there are any delays, it is, it has a financial impact. And so we're trying to be as expedient as possible. We're only asking for this one now because it wasn't on the original agenda, and so we did have to make an exception for an item not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours because we just had the school planning committee meeting the day before yesterday in the evening. And so we ask for your consideration to sign that document.
Any questions or comments?
I'm sorry, to authorize the chair to sign.
Any questions or comments on this? All right, do I have a motion to authorize me to sign the project scope and budget agreement?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Okay.
Will come down tomorrow? Do you have it?
I'm sorry.
Is it at the office or town office? Where do I go?
So I signed them and he handed them back to, it could be a town ad, it could be a town.
For the town office tomorrow morning.
I think it's circulating, yeah.
Okay.
It needs a lot of, like, I think four signatures, five, yeah.
Thank you. All right, I'll get down there first thing in the morning. Okay, next item up, review and possible vote to accept Yardley ring license agreement. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so last year you had entered into an agreement with the Lions Club and you had signed it. The Lions Club had then wanted to revisit that, make some changes to that, some revisions, and so they have. It has been run by the town and by legal, and it's in front of you. We also sent it to you prior so you could read it over and hear if you had any questions. And there's possibility for you to accept this newer version of the agreement tonight if you are so inclined.
Does anyone have any comments or questions on this draft agreement with the Lions Club? Go ahead.
So it does look pretty much the same as last year. There are a couple of obviously things to fill in, like under number one, the season, and changing the years under number two. I did have, I noticed that the insurance under number eight, the aggregate liability was decreased by a million dollars, but obviously town council must have been fine with that. The other, the one main question that I had, because I did see, under number three, condition of premises, there used to be a sentence about responsibility for any D damage, but I saw that that was taken care of in the release paragraph.
Yes.
But under conditions of use under exhibit A, it says licensers should be responsible for the electricity bill associated with the property and all the licensing costs, fill the right bill. So who's paying for that?
That's the town.
The town.
Yes.
The school's not going to be responsible for that?
Correct. It's a modest, a modest cost. I think Mr. Reed told me two or $3,000 a year and that they chose to take that on as a good fate.
Great, okay. The other question I had was down on exhibit A, the second to last paragraph, that was taken out, the responsibility for all attendees, and I was wondering why that decision was made.
They had decided not to, at first, they were, not the Lions Club, the organization, the boosters that were going to use it. Had talked about adding snacks and doing some fundraising and charging, and they have since agreed to not do any of that.
Okay.
So there won't be actual paid functions going on there, and so it more accurately falls under the recreation coverage that the town already has.
Okay.
Because of that.
Any other?
That's all I had.
Okay, any good deal? Anyone else?
Yeah, maybe.
No?
Just the dates.
Yeah. Is there also good? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the, excuse me, the Yardley group license agreement?
So moved.
With the.
With the corrections made.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Okay. Continuing the discussion on naming the new elementary school.
At your last meeting, you began a very preliminary conversation. Nothing was actually discussed except the fact that you were going to discuss the process. And so this is just an ongoing agenda item in the event that information comes to you or there's anything you'd like to share about a potential process for naming the new elementary school.
Madam Chair.
You go ahead, Ms. Caroline.
We do have a visitor who happens to be the very hardworking chair of the school planning committee who has some information that might help us with this discussion.
So I'm just doing this so that I can check this and say I closed a loop in a way. Obviously, you guys, you're talking about.
Who are you again?
Jane Martin, Amalene. I know you have a, there's a policy around naming new facilities, and I'm assuming that that process that you're talking about is falling within that policy. But last spring, when we were working on, you know, very early phases of organizing a group that was going to support the project, there was a young woman who was very passionate about the naming piece of the project. I think she was a recent OA grad. She, I believe she may have posted something on Facebook at the time, but she also reached out to me. And at the time, I kind of politely put the brakes on and said, it's really much too early to be thinking about a name. I told her that when that topic came up, I would be sure to mention her interest in that process to whomever, and I'm assuming that you are now the whomever. She was, her name was Siobhan McKenna. Is that a familiar, I think she's a recent.
She just graduated from Stonehill.
Right, a relatively recent graduate. I can tell you what her interest was if you care, or I cannot tell you what her, she was very passionate about naming the new elementary school after Blanche James. Now, that, that's just a name that she felt.
Blanche James.
It was, you know, she, but she had written a letter, it was very thoughtful, it was well documented, but again, I asked her politely, please put a pin in that work and wait, which she did. So I'm just making, I want to make sure that her efforts and her interest and her enthusiasm are not lost, so.
Well, to build off of that, one of the things I was going to mention tonight is when you think about the schools that we do have named after somebody, they're all named after a male Easton figure. And I was also going to suggest that maybe we look into some type of a female role model that has been a very important part of the Easton history, whether it's her or not, but that concept.
Right, right. So I, yeah, I, obviously, I think, you know, when I read through what the policy is, you guys talked clearly about you needing to have a process that's going to help the community and all of that, but again, my only goal is to make sure I can say, who was that loop?
And you did talk, when we had the discussion, non-discussion, the preliminary sort of words about this, I had mentioned that we had always agreed that it would not really be such a great idea to name it after a living person, that it should be somebody who's deceased. Because when you go for a living person, that often brings a lot of controversy to the community because people disagree for whatever reason, and, you know, so that would certainly, that criterion, and I totally agree about the, we have, we have.
Agreed.
And Oliver and. What is H, HH, I forget her.
Henry Hudson.
Right, I was trying to remember the, yeah, so, yes, so Oliver.
So I'm probably going to just message Siobhan and let her know, I've made aware of her interest from almost however many months ago now.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah, I should pass along.
I can get it, I can absolutely get everything that she, I printed it off, I can send it to Dr. Cabral, I'm happy to do that, I just, I got to find it. I printed it off when, when I had it all last spring, so.
Or if you're going to message her, you could encourage her to forward it to the school committee at this time, because now it's.
That's exactly what I will do. Thank you.
And as I was thinking about the naming item, so now we have four, we will, we will have four schools. So you have all of our Ains High School, Richardson, Olmstead, Easton Middle School. So my thought was not to go with a person for the new school, but to go with Easton Elementary School, like you had worked on. So that was just, those are my two cents, just another Easton school and not, but I am, I mean, Blanche James, great, and there's, there are also going to be people that are like, okay, there are other people in Easton besides the Ainses that have done things, so, you know.
This is why I think you need a process.
Right, right, absolutely. Anybody else want to chime in?
Well, I guess we do have to at least begin to talk about an actual process because it's helpful to have people submit information or ideas, but, well, we were talking about this at school planning last night, someone said that in some towns, it's in the town charter, the town meeting actually makes the decision. And I said, well, I actually have not had a chance to check the charter, but if it's in our charter, we have totally violated it every time because this school committee for the last 27 years has absolutely been, had taken the total responsibilities for naming Richardson, first Richardson School, Olmstead School, then Richardson Olmstead, then also the Easton Middle School. All of those were, happened just during the time I've been on school committee, and there were votes by the school committee, so.
So it sounds like the first thing is to check.
Check the charter, make sure.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if that were the case because we are very attentive.
We do.
In the age of this town, we'll have. Feel like that would have come.
Well, and also Bill Simmons was the superintendent for all but the time that we combined the two schools to Richardson Olmstead, and he was an attorney and was very, very diligent about that type of thing, so I would be shocked, frankly, if that, but it doesn't, since the, it was actually our designer architect team, the, I mean, engineering folks, that said that it is often actually a town meeting decision, which I was thinking that would be quite a discussion potentially, but.
What, now, what kind of process have you used in the past for the naming?
So I was trying to remember, people brought suggestions to us, and I think that Richardson, Richardson School and Olmstead School were a suggestion of some children, right? Do you remember that?
Basically.
Yeah, I mean, I don't remember if they were high school, whatever, you think, I mean, okay, 10,000 things have happened in the last 26 years, and now I think, oh, I should remember that one, but I think it was a suggestion. People did come forward in the past with some ideas, but the middle school, it seems like there was hardly any real debate. It was just kind of like this, we had, we were, I think, literally the last community to have a six through eight, or, well, some we said five through eight, in middle school, and we were just so, we felt so accomplished to finally, you know, have a real middle school, but I think we just kind of jumped right to Easton Middle School, and it did make a lot of sense. And actually, what you just said was my first thought, you know, Easton Elementary School, because it is going to be all the elementary schools, and it's very neutral.
Right.
In the sense that you're not.
It's probably boring, but it does the job, like, no, it's.
Yeah, you said early elementary is probably more accurate. Well, it's typically, but it's.
That might not. Maybe it will be Blanche James. No, tribally.
Let's see now.
All right.
VA, okay. I'm just trying to see.
So as far as the process, though, I think maybe the first thing we need to do is, do we reach out to townspeople, children, what, I don't know, what, where do we go, what's the first thing?
I think you probably want to take a look at the charter first and review the policy.
All right, check with the town charter and then work on a process, okay? All right, so hopefully we'll have something for the next meeting to go to.
You had mentioned that it probably made sense to do it fairly expeditiously so that when people start referring, you know, the updates on construction and everything, we already have a name.
Right.
People already have an attachment to that name.
Exactly.
When the school opens, so we probably need to kind of.
Minimize this process and get it done quickly.
You actually say that in your policy, that you should do it early.
Right.
For that very reason, it is coming back to you.
If you, if you review your school committee policy and the town charter by the, independently, by the next meeting, then you perhaps will be able to discuss the process.
Sure.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Sounds good. Okay. I don't even want to talk about policy. Okay, thank you, Jane. Thank you, everybody. Next, review of school calendar 2020 to 2021. You have three, I'm going to Dr. Cabral, please, you have three new ones, is what I said.
You have three versions in front of you, not in your packet, new versions in front of you. I will just sort of highlight the differences between them. So first of all, there are two full-day professional development days that we always look to add to the calendar. The first one on all three, I'll tell you the similarities, on all three is November 3rd. That is election day, and it is a presidential election, and so we expect a big turnout, and it would be just easier logistically to not have students on campus. So that's going to be one of them. The other, we have gotten feedback and we did check attendance, about four-day weekends, and so we are suggesting January 15th as the second professional development day. Other than that, where the parent-teacher conferences are, that has to do with where the semesters, quarters, and trimesters fall, it has to do with feedback from all of the schools, from the principals, we just did this at our last cabinet meeting. So those are the same on all three, and of course, the holidays and school vacation periods are the same. The difference here would only be the start and end dates. So the first version you see starts school, well, let me just remind you that the contract, the teacher's contract says that school cannot begin before the Monday before Labor Day. So that, in this case, would be August 31st, so it can't begin before August 31st. So the first suggestion you have here is for staff starting of September 1st, which is the Tuesday, and students starting the next day, September 2nd. The third version is the closest to that, it has students starting on, excuse me, staff starting on Monday, the 31st, and students starting on September 1st. Out of those two, we are recommending the first because in communication with the town clerk, the state, Secretary of State's office has not yet set the state primary date for 2020, and it does look as though that could be September 1st. And if that is September 1st, again, it would, not only would it be logistically difficult for there to be students in the building, but it would be almost impossible for the first day of school. So out of the two, we recommend the first version, where only staff will be here on the 1st, which looks like will be the state primary election, and students starting on the 2nd. The second version is one that has the students starting after Labor Day. We don't necessarily recommend this one either, and the reason for that, this one has the staff starting on the 3rd, the Thursday, and the students starting on the 8th, the day after Labor Day. The problem with this is if you look at when school would be released, we have a snow release date of June 28th, and we're just not comfortable with the lateness of that should we have a very inclement winter. So out of the three, right now, we are recommending the first one, and that, those are the reasons why, and you certainly can answer any other questions that you have, but everything else on here, except for the start dates for students, kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, and the end dates for students, kindergarten, pre-kindergarten, they are the same.
All right, so I know, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, you had come back with a different one because of the science thing that they do at the.
That's right. That's in March.
When is that?
That is on the 19th.
So it's on that half-day.
Yeah.
Of conferences.
Right.
Okay. All right, there was something else that I was thinking about that.
Oh, you mean the Olympiad, then?
Yes, science, Olympiad.
Right, there was some other thing that we changed because of a school.
Exactly, and I don't remember what it is right now.
See, I'm not the only one for that.
I know, well.
Didn't you remember what that meant?
No, and it might not have even been a big thing.
Oh, I think it was, yeah, we, I did, right, so the high school, obviously, I don't know if it's obvious, but it's obvious to me, after working with high schools for so long, they prefer the prom to be a little earlier in May, and they have traditionally had it on Friday. The problem is that it's extremely difficult for us to have these split half-days because of transportation. We are complaints every time, it makes very tight runs, and it's extremely difficult. So to have, you know, for example, the 14th being the prom and the 21st be placement for our elementary schools, it's just too difficult. So last year, we had asked the high school to please coincide their prom with the placement of students because we just need that to be a little later in May so that the teachers who are placing the elementary students for their next year, they have more information. And they are doing their final assessments, their data collection, just before that. So I did talk to Mr. Paul, and we did say that the prom, the advisor's going to shoot for the 21st for the prom, he's well aware of that date, and that, again, works for the placement, so that should not be an issue this time around.
Does anyone have any other comments? We don't have to vote on this tonight, we can just, we'll get it or we can vote on it.
Well, I think the reasons you gave for suggesting the first one make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems very well thought out, the whole schedule.
You don't have a vote on the agenda, so vote on it next time.
Okay, all right.
Anything else you'd like us to look into?
You, you better, okay, thank you very much for that. I had to believe we're talking vote, 2021, and go on. All right, thank you. Review of policies.
So we have, this is school committee policies, we have had some updates in homeless and foster care children procedures in the state through the guidance of Sarah Slatterback, who's the Department of Education's homeless education state coordinator. We took a look at the three policies, or the policy that was, that's the current school committee, your current school committee policy, that addresses this issue, and looking at the three policies that are named here, JFABD, JFABE, and JV, JF, F, they are, our current policy is not in line with the three of these. So I know that there is a subcommittee right now working on policies, but obviously, when there's a change in policies, we want to bring that to the forefront and ask you to consider that. Also, we're having a review by the Department of Education in January, and because this is not a three-day policy, it's one of the things they're going to be looking for, so we are bringing that to your attention as a policy that's not currently in compliance because of recent changes at the state level. And so we are asking you to take a first reading of this so that hopefully you are able to vote on this either at your next meeting or there's changes need to be made the one after that.
And who drafted these?
These are for MASC, the MASC, MASC Justice Association of Schools.
And so these would be in, as a replacement for our current policy?
Correct.
So you just need to compare those three with our one and make the adjustments, right? Or take, substitute these three and put them right.
That's the easiest thing to do, just because they're most likely to be applied by the state, right?
Okay, so why don't we review that and then talk about it at our next meeting?
So is our current policy only JFABD, or do we have? No, this is in E and F language as well. Okay.
And you can see that they're all, you know, foster care, military children, and all of that, yeah.
We probably should vote at the next meeting, I mean, because in order to have it influence of that review.
If you're all set, but I'm sure we can.
No, no, the next night, we can do it today, but.
Right, so vote, right.
If you're saying we would discuss it, but I think we.
Well, I meant, you know what I mean.
Discuss and possibly vote.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Okay. And then review and possible vote of KHC.
So KHC, this is a second reading, so you can vote on this this evening if you are ready for that. This is the policy that you had on distribution and posting of promotional materials, and that is a common, commonly used policy, so we asked you to review it, council has reviewed it, made some recommendations on the redline copy that you have in your packet, and if you are okay with those changes and want to accept them, you can vote on it this evening. If you have any other questions or want further review, we can do that as well.
On the backwards, talks about distribution will not be allowed via school email or parent and guardian email addresses. Don't, I was just wondering, when our principals put out like a weekly or monthly newsletters, sometimes don't we send, do things get sent to that?
That's not much promotional material, and.
So like fee, for example, fee?
Well, that's the guidance we had given them, is that if they put a link in their newsletter, that's different than using the email.
Okay.
To send a separate email to parents for that promotional.
Okay.
But we had in the past, for your example, for fee, we had sent out the district email in the past.
Right.
And that is something that should be done through the newsletter, just to be fair and consistent for this policy.
This would be the policy, we could certainly, we could certainly develop practices that would be determined by, you know, the superintendent's office. Well, what I was thinking is this disclaimer that's at the end, the.
Nancy and I are just like up to here at policies.
They are your, but they are your.
I know, I know they are, and I notice nobody else has signed on. It's like, thank you.
We're having fun.
It's a Jackie's picture birthday.
But the disclaimer. But the disclaimer, I think there was a discussion recently about there having been a disclaimer on something that we were, we actually had some concerns about, but it wasn't necessarily prominently displayed. And I'm thinking, one of the things that at least I, as one individual, would recommend is that we develop some sort of guideline for where that disclaimer would be, and that maybe it needs to be more prominently displayed for certain
And in that situation, wasn't that a situation where the flyer wasn't even approved?
It wasn't, it was, it was approved by the principal.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, right?
No, it came through our office.
It came through your office?
Okay.
I mean, I still have questions about the approval of that, serious questions, but still, the disclaimer was on it, it's just that the disclaimer wasn't
Where it was, right.
It should have been first, because it was a really problematic, quite frankly.
It just says must include the following disclaimer printed on, or stapled to this material.
Yeah, so, yeah, I think we need to have some, some sort of guidelines that I would absolutely trust the superintendent's office to develop that would strengthen that, or at least it has a
Opposed to putting it in the policy, you're saying?
No, no, the policy, it should be in the policy, the disclaimer, I'm saying you can have, you can have practices
Okay.
That are consistent with policies, you know, I mean, how you implement the policy can be determined by the superintendent's
You prefer it at the top, you're saying?
Well, or, I mean, I don't know if you want to differentiate among types of materials, I mean, if it's just talking about something that our kids are doing, you know, an organization, one of the kids' organizations, or something that we would just hardly even need a disclaimer, that's one thing, but that particular piece of literature that was distributed was very problematic, and the disclaimer was, I mean, people probably didn't even get to the disclaimer, so
Yeah, we had not given guidance on where to put the disclaimer, we just required it.
Yeah. Okay. So I think for the second, this, sort of the second category of group, so, you know, PTA, PTO, rec department, booster clubs, where, you know, that's, I think that's the kind where the disclaimer's there, but it's not, it's not controversial.
Right, right.
Typically coming from those groups, so to put it at the bottom, you know, kind of tuck it in some later, it's fine.
So that's kind of what I was thinking, that, you know, it doesn't have to, because in a way, the disclaimer's pretty strong, so if you put it first, but for a booster club or something, that could be a problem too. On the other hand, so I, I think it would be just groups that are not directly associated with the school, or school activities involving students, something like that would be, the disclaimer really could be at the bottom, right?
Non-school-related organization or business, those are the top, that's easy enough.
What's the volume, say, of the non-school organization to school organization in terms of the number of things that get distributed?
We have a spreadsheet, I just, I have it with us, but we could give you, we could go back and give you an actual
No, no, I'm just curious if you happen to know, like, you know, is this, is the, is a non-school organization approaching the district, you know, super common and get a ton of them all the time?
Yes.
Well, they just have to put the disclaimer at the top.
Okay, so, would you like to vote on this? Yes, okay. Do I have a motion to accept the distribution and posting of promotional materials policy KHC with corrections, correct?
There's no, there's no corrections, it's going to be a, they're going to
Oh, that's
The implementation.
Implementation, all right, so just skip that, okay. Do I have a motion to accept policy KHC?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Add this one to our vote.
I'm sure you're having so much fun, I feel guilty.
Jackie's carrying that notebook around. Wow. Okay. Presentation and possible vote of superintendent's goals, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so I was just, I need a structural change in terms of the template that's used, so I would just like to sort of take you through how it's set up first, and then I'll go over them with you, and you can answer any questions you have, clarifications, you can give me suggestions to be done. So what I did first was, this is just a different template, I, you asked me to pare it down, because the first was actually quite Alicia-ish, so you asked me to pare it down, I absolutely did. This I put more into a chart, and I realized, so what I did last year was, I had a separate document for the goals, and then the second document for the report that I have to provide, this is a little bit different because our educators don't have that, so we don't really have a template for that. So I tried to think of the easiest way for you to see this and capture it all, instead of having two different ones, I just kept the original one that I use for reporting out, and then what is completed and the evidence for that, I just put TBD. So you will see this exact document again with the rest of it filled in.
Sure.
And then it comes with a narrative as well, when it comes time for my reporting out to you. So that's the only difference in the structure, just to keep it more consistent. And then I was reviewing this before the meeting and realized, hmm, okey-dokey, this is like some really big ones, so, they may be a couple of years, which is fine, this is a single-year evaluation, we're not doing multiple-year evaluation yet, however, the goals can be more than one year, and so before you comment on that, you will see probably that there are some big ones, but I, as I tell the staff, I think it's a lot more important to aim for something that is worth aiming for and getting eighty percent of the way there, and then still working toward it, than to set a really low bar and just blow past it. So I wanted to model what advice I give. So if you take a look, I used the six areas of superintendent rubric that you asked me to focus on. The first was district improvement, instructional leadership, the instruction indicator, and I also added something different this year, which is underneath the goal number, I put what strategic objective it relates to, because obviously, we used the strategic plan when, in the rubric, when we talked about what goals should be used, but I want to just keep bringing it through, because this is the time where we're going to make the plan alive to everyone, and again, I think it's important that I model that it being used, and so I've used it. So I added the curriculum development strategic objective. So the goal itself is, all principals will know, consistently identify, and expect appropriate inclusive teaching practices that reflect high expectations, student engagement, and personalization to meet the diverse learning styles, needs, and interests of all students. This is focused, I'll give you the highlights, and you can look over the key actions, I'll also remind you what those are. The key actions are, it's the verbs, the actions that I am going to lead and perform throughout the year. The benchmarks are things that you should be able to see as evidence as the process is going on. And then measures of success, that's more of the authentic measure, that's an improvement in culture, or attitude, or scores, or something that is more of an authentic measure that you should see at the end of the, of the goals. So this is focused on the area that we said we needed some more work in, which was the special education, English language learners, and advanced learning opportunities for all students. And so we have been talking about that, you just saw that referenced in past presentations, you still see it in the school improvement plans that were brought before you, and so it's part of my goals as well. Primarily, that's going to be done through my totally visits with principals and our cabinet meetings. So this is really a focus on principals' development of professional capacity. Last year, we focused on, when I go to perform teacher observations with the principals, I'm not observing the teachers, I'm observing the administration. And what we looked for last year was calibrating our process, making sure that observations were being done in a consistent way across the district, and that all of the administrators last year were looking for a clear purpose of lesson and evidence of that. And so I feel as though we were able to do that, and I'm very pleased with how the observations are providing authentic feedback, and they're useful to people. The focus this year is going to be on determining are diverse learning needs being met in the classroom, by evidence of the lesson, the activities, if students are in groups, why are they in certain groups, what was the choice made for that to happen? And these are the things that I'm going to be talking with the principals about. Again, this is not, I'm not focusing on the teacher practice, I'm focusing on the principals' observation of the teacher practice. So I will not be, I will not be evaluating teachers, I will be evaluating the principals. And so they're going to have, they're already started having them, and will continue to have the conversations with their staff about what they're going to be looking for in their observations this year, and that's going to be a big part of it. So that's the first goal. If you have any questions about the key actions, benchmarks, or measures of success? The second goal, you asked me to focus on student learning, management, and operations, social emotional well-being. I'm connecting this to our student and educator wellness strategic objective. Develop a district operational system that cultivates a commitment to developing effective social and emotional competencies in all students. So we need to complete a thorough assessment of where we are right now, so, and also a current reality check and a, and a needs assessment, what we need to complete this year. We would like to develop a comprehensive positive behavior support system for the Easton Public Schools pre-K to 12. So we are going to launch into that work this year. We just recently established some data collection processes, and so now it's going to be about learning how to analyze and use that data, and make, make some mid-course corrections based on the analysis we're getting from the data. And so it's not only just collecting it, but then using it authentically to make some change. A lot of professional development is involved with this one, a lot of providing tools and resources to staff, but also to students, and helping parents, students, and staff acquire the tools necessary to meet their social emotional needs, and help them to navigate the issues that, the challenges that they're facing with that.
Well, is this one of those goals that you see as, I mean, I see this as an ongoing goal, this would be pretty difficult.
Yes, but this is focused on developing an operational system.
Okay.
So we should have a system in place. I'm not saying that we're going to have well-adjusted, totally social and emotional competent children.
No.
That's coming, you're right.
You don't, you don't really state that, but at the same time, even a system, there's so much information out there, there's so much sort of breaking news in this area, that I could see a situation where you are well on your way to developing a system, and then new research comes to light, whatever, so I, I think this is one of those things that's going to have to be constantly
Well, just tweaked at least. Right, just like curriculum, curriculum units, it is always going to be a living plan, but we have to get one in place.
Yeah.
And so there is a sense of urgency for us to get that plan in place. Goal three, what's that? District improvement, management and operations, human resources, management and development, and this goes with our strategic objective number four, educator excellence. Implement a cohesive and inclusive approach to recruitment, hiring, induction, development, and career growth that promotes high quality and effective practice. I had a goal similar to this last year, but it really was just focused on working with pre-service programs and coming up with new ways to advertise our jobs. That is not working for any of us because of the lack of candidates, and so now I'm realizing that in, in meeting with the commissioner, and talking at the state level, it's a challenge across the state, my colleagues locally, we're all competing for a very small pool of candidates, I realize now it's a bigger need, and it's more about developing these educators and working on creating a pipeline for incentivizing fields in this area. So not only will I continue to work on recruiting in particular high-needs areas, like the special education programs, ELL, advancing learning, school adjustment counselors, we're having trouble finding behaviorists, mostly in the social emotional arena, as I'm sure you can imagine. I'm trying to come up with some creative solutions, like developing internship programs with the social work departments of local universities, instead of working just with the teacher prep programs, you know, taking a different angle on that. I talked to the commissioner about potentially forgiving, helping us broaden loan forgiveness programs, because we don't benefit from that in this district primarily, because we're not considered an urban district of high need. However, we have high needs, and we're showing a lack of being able to recruit the staff that all these professionals are going to the larger urban districts, which they need them to, but we literally have no candidates, no positions. So different things like that, to try to take a different tack at it, instead of just throwing up my hands and saying, well, candidates aren't out there, how can we incentivize getting more candidates?
Was he receptive to them?
He was, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And also, excuse me, also, looking outside of the state, looking other than, you know, we broadened our search in the state, and now I've been talking to some superintendents across the country who are having almost the opposite problem, and they're looking to get some more diversity in their schools, and it's ironically the diversity that we represent in Easton, so talking about different teacher swap programs, or things like that. But I won't get into too much detail, there's, there's a lot to do, but I just want to give you an idea, it's, it's different in the recruitment goal last year in the sense that I'm not just trying to advertise it better. I, I realize it's a much broader issue than that, and so I, I'm trying to create some other pathways. Also, working internally, I think it's very important to make Easton's successes and talents and programming more public, because that's part of enticing people to want to come to work here. So showing up, showcasing our programs, our educators, having them be able to have those professional presenting opportunities, having the community better understand our social emotional needs, so they can support our efforts in this area. It's not just about recruiting, it's also about retaining, and so we want to make sure that staff is happy here, and that this is the place they want to work. And education right now is an extremely, extremely challenging vocation, and so we're combating that, and so you notice we didn't just have student wellness as one of our strategic goals, it's also educated wellness, and so I think that's definitely part of this. Questions or comments?
I have a comment, which is, I really congratulate you on having, really having an innovative approach to this very sticky problem, I mean, we've been talking about it for years, and honestly, a couple of ideas that you've come up with very recently, I had never heard before. So I really am impressed with the fact that you are approaching this in a whole new way, particularly that whole pipeline issue, I mean, I really haven't seen that discussed much, and the possibility of exchanging, I mean, it's very complicated, I recognize that, it may not happen right away, or whatever, but, I mean, some really creative ideas, so.
Thank you, it, I am taking some risks here, I'm trying to think outside of box, they may not be successful, but if they aren't, we'll figure something else, and we'll just keep working at it. Goal number four is district improvement, family and community engagement, engagement indicator, again, this is student educator wellness. This one, well, first of all, establish strategic partnerships with community organizations, businesses, and families that focus on strengthening or expanding their role and maximizing their participation in partnering with the district to improve its effectiveness at modeling inclusive and appropriate behavior, communications, and engagement. That's a big one. However, it is impossible to ignore that that is a desperate need for us, so I believe it is extremely important to at least create this as a major area of focus. It's not just social media, it's all communication and engagement, that is most effective if you are modeling it, and so if we can use our strategic plans, our values, our transfer goals as the center, and we can utilize that language for children, and they're seeing it from multi, multiple different places, whether it's at home, it's at school, it's at their place of worship, it's out in the community, it's at vendors when they go shopping, we're hoping that we can all work together. it's at vendors when they go shopping, we're hoping that we can all work together and not only provide students with the tools, but also provide them with the effective model of how we handle our communication engagement, both within school and outside of school. So that is going to be an ongoing one, but I do have to start working on it. We have to make it a focused area.
Go ahead.
I think this is huge. Is there any way, not to be second guessing anyone here, but that first, establish strategic partnerships with community organizations and so on. You could read that, at least I, with my limited cognitive capacity tonight, can read that and not really know exactly what you're talking about. Then when you go down further and you talk about effective social media policies and guidelines and things like that, it becomes clear because we talk all the time about how critical that is, particularly in terms of the modeling and everything. I was just trying to figure out if there was any way to kind of shorten that original strategic. Well, I guess that's already in place as a strategic objective though, so we can't really... I'm just trying to find a way to kind of focus on the social media piece to me is just becoming so overwhelming. And this is, this is a very broad-based kind of partnering with businesses and so on, but I don't think we're really getting at the need of it. I mean, like I said, the second bullet point does say, share effective media policies, social media policies, and develop guidelines for appropriate use. But I'd almost like to see a way of kind of zeroing in on that particular, I don't know. What do other people think? Am I just off-base here?
No, I think every social media component is one piece.
It is one piece.
Right, we're looking at essentially reinforcing a culture change.
Right, no, I agree. It's only one piece of that, but it's right now a very sort of front and centerpiece that we're all very concerned about.
And we can easily create a set of guidelines for people. And I did go back and forth about how much I was adding to this, but again, sort of to Jane's point, I really see this more as a huge cultural paradigm shift. We can give people guidelines, but I really see the social media issue as simply a lens on some things that have become cultural norms that we would rather not have be cultural norms. And so if you look down at the action steps, it's also about, you know, providing professional development seminars, workshops, or strategies for approaching difficult situations and solving problems, positive reinforcement, using the core values as a benchmark of things that we really want to focus on and think are important as a district. And then as a result of those things, hopefully, be able to make some on-paper policies that are guidelines for people. Because we really want it to make sense that certain forms of communication, certain behaviors, certain volumes, certain vocabularies, isn't the most effective way to communicate your viewpoints. And I think that's the need that you're talking about. Social media is one symptom of that, I think.
That's a good way to frame it. And I think Jen always said, I mean, the fact that you defined it as a cultural, addressing the whole culture and the changes that are needed back out to, so, thank you.
Yeah, because I mean, I know, I think we talked about this during the strategy session over the summer, but this is the piece that I'm thinking, you know, that we want not only to have kind of a standards of behavior and communication in school, but to then also get buy-in from, so that kids are getting that reinforcement if they're at an after-school program or they're at a non-school, you know, if they're part of their sports team or, you know, their scout troop or whatever, that we've got kind of the community as a whole trying to reinforce.
And the idea, of course, the ultimate goal, of course, would be for one of our children to say, "Well, that's not nice to say. I'm not going to say that," before they even get to social media. Not just saying, "Well, I'm thinking that and I'm believing that, but this guideline tells me not to put it on social media, so maybe I won't for that reason." That's not really what we want. We really want the shift to happen. Social media is one indicator of where people's thinking is right now. And so I think it's good evidence of being able to have some self-control and to filter and effectively communicate as opposed to ineffectively communicate. But I don't think it's the whole, I don't think it's going to solve the whole problem. So this is a big one.
It is.
But we have to start on it for sure. And I think it has to be a coordinated effort, so I wanted to put it out there so that I can be held accountable for following through.
You're going to change the world, eh, Sharon?
Okay, goal five, district improvement, professional culture, commitment to high standards. I believe this goes with strategic objective one, student achievement. Utilize the strategic plan and core values to promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a culture of reflective practice, high expectations, respect for all, and continuous learning for all. This is the one that I really believe is important in helping the strategic plan come alive. You've heard me many times over many different pieces of paperwork that I put in front of you that it is very important to me that we do not just check off boxes by completing reports. We can do that very easily and shoving them on a shelf somewhere is very important that we make them alive. Otherwise, there's absolutely no need for that. So we got to the point in our last strategic plan where we created one. We got people familiar with the idea of a strategic plan, but I can't say any of you could recite the core values. I can't say any of our students would really say they live by them. And so we're going to, we're trying to leverage what we learned from that with this strategic plan. And by the end of this strategic plan, those should be some of the things that you see and hear. You should see it posted everywhere. You should see kids be able to refer to it. You should hear not only teachers, but parents say, "Well, I don't think that's respectful behavior." And you know, Mr. Gettle always tells you, and I do too, that that's an important component of being a good, of being, you know, a good student and a good citizen at home. So it's important that that comes alive and so we've got some concrete steps here in terms of developing implementation, some public relations, creating language that we're going to share. Okay, and the last one, student learning and professional practice, professional culture, cultural proficiency. Again, I struggled with this. I think it could be student achievement, but I felt sort of the root of student achievement comes from student and educator wellness. And so I wanted to focus on that. Understand, develop, and implement culturally responsive policies. Empower educators to build culturally responsive learning environments and partner with the community members to create a culture that accepts and affirms individual differences. Another big one, this is going to be a multi-year goal. But again, I think it needs to be articulated. I think it needs to be really expressed. And I want to try to get some partners on board to help with this. I really, I think it's the time to make this an explicit goal instead of just an implied end game for our kids. This is going to result in some policies, but again, this is about the culture itself, which is why it's a big one. Not school committee policies. So this is about, again, you're going to see the concrete steps are about collecting data, making plans, but it's also really reframing some paradigms for staff, students, and the community, providing them with tools that can help them change those paradigms. This has to do with implicit bias, unconscious bias, like privilege, creating professional learning communities, giving students the language to have conversations, difficult conversations. We have a lot of very engaged staff who are extremely interested in learning more about this and helping students through it. They're looking for tools, they're looking for concrete steps, they're looking for appropriate language to use. And so we want to provide that.
There's a lot here.
Yeah, great.
And good luck.
Well, together, chair, buddy, chair.
I know, we're all in this together.
Good luck to us.
Talk to me. All right, does anyone want to make any comments or anything else before we vote? Do I have a motion? Well, no, we don't have a demotion. Right, so I'm just going to say, all those, can I just?
We need to make a motion. Second.
Okay, and all those in favor, so we just voted on it, right?
Yeah.
I thought we had to do like a different kind of, whatever. Okay, public comment.
You had such a great comment earlier.
Having trouble counting the number of people that are...
Secret superintendent notes.
We are, I will give a quick update about the school building committee unless, right ahead. So we, school planning committee, excuse me, we met, was it last night? Tuesday night, sorry. We met Tuesday night and we are coming up with, so what I really want to make clear to everyone, and I actually put this in writing to the entire staff, is that the plan in terms of the physical footprint of the school is done because in this process, the MSBA is very particular and the Department of Education is also very particular about certain elements of the building. This has been approved by both of them. And so at this point, we can only make very minor tweaks to the actual footprint of the building. Can't add square foot, for example. It would be very difficult to move walls because there are very strict guidelines within the building. You can only have a certain amount of feet for hallways, a certain amount of feet for class space, a certain amount. So if you move a wall, now you're adding and subtracting. And so there's going to be very small amount of change. However, they are doing the fine-tuning now. And so the designers have broken it up into what they're calling user groups. We had over 50 public meetings when we were coming up with the design for the building, to come up with the cost of the building. And so the public focus groups are, I think primarily over, they didn't say any of them were on the horizon. However, now it's more like user groups. So you are a user of this space, right? You're the principal of the building, you're going to use the administrative office. Let's talk about the inside of the space, the interior, the materials, what's going to go where, things like storage spaces, cupboards, that kind of thing. So we are going to be inviting certain user groups to come to those meetings. But it will be by invitation and it will be for user groups. So for example, yesterday, they had two meetings. One was for first responders, emergencies. So it was representative from police, fire, emergency services. And, and Chrissy Pruitt was there as well, the assistant superintendent. The other meeting was the athletic spaces outside. There will be another meeting for exterior landscape spaces, play spaces, trebery, things like that. This was specifically for the athletic field spaces. And so the athletic director was there, the chair of the physical education, health, and wellness department was there, and DPW was there. And so they went over that space with the designers. So it's user groups like that, just to do fine-tuning. There may be small changes to the actual plan, but these user groups are simply making recommendations to the designers. And then the designers, monthly, we have set up monthly meetings with the school planning committee. Monthly, they will take the information from the user group meetings, there are dozens of them. They will bring them to the school planning committee. Those are open public meetings that are posted and anyone can go and observe those. And the school planning committee will make the final determination if there will be any changes based on that. So some decisions have not been made at all, like what kinds of trees and shrubs are going to be there. Some of them have been made, but might be changed slightly, like the direction of the softball field, something like that. But those will be happening in these user groups and they will all be reported out. And only decisions that will be made will be at the posted open school planning committee meeting. So if members of the public did want to attend, or people who are perhaps in a user group that weren't part of it, no decisions will be made outside of that, so they can attend any or all of those and be part of that process.
And those meetings are posted on, still on?
Those are on the town website, posted.
With that school planning?
School planning.
That ES, yeah.
The monthly meetings that even maybe a couple lectures will be done in the next year.
So there's still opportunity if people are interested. There are just not going to be open invitations to things like there have been in the past because we're at a stage where it's more fine.
Okay.
The other thing is that for the project, the website is still active. We wanted to make sure all of the information to this point was maintained, archived, so anybody can still go and look and get up to date from day one until now. It's going to stay live throughout the process, throughout the construction process, and updates will be put on there. But if they were looking for anything from the last two years, it's still going to be available. We'll leave everything there should anybody want to go back and get any information up to this point.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay, school committee notes.
Oh, I just want to say for assistant superintendent notes, the assistant superintendent is at a case conference, it's a Title I conference. That's why she's not here this evening. It's a very valuable conference for us because Title I is a federal grant and some requirements and things change every year, so she's going to keep up to date on that.
Great, school committee notes. Go ahead, Carolyn.
I listed everything because I was in New York, so you can talk about, or did you already talk about the, oh, you did. I said the volleyball tournament and all of that stuff. Anything else new? I know you were on the conference call for the, anything else coming up?
No, we're very blah right now.
Very.
Very blah. They have a few things on the list, but nope, nothing coming up right now. Thank you.
So does it count as a school committee note to have a little mini lecture presented? Okay, so one of the things, one of the things I've been thinking a lot about is this incredibly difficult and fraught decision that superintendents have to make about whether to call a snow day. And I have nothing but admiration. And the second thought is, of course, I'm so happy I'm not in that position for people that do need to make those decisions. But I really want to emphasize for the public that these decisions are not just made on a whim. There is much consultation, not only with DPW and with various, you know, entities, but also with other local superintendents. And honestly, for people who had complaints and, you know, kind of thought it was not necessarily a good call, then I guess they were also complaining about Stoughton, Canton, Sharon, Mansfield, who else? Every single local district was closed as well. And by the way, much of the snow that did in fact, at least in Southeaston, slowed down at 7:00 AM, picked right back up again and it snowed a lot more. So I really, honestly, am so disappointed and frankly irritated by people that are the armchair quarterbacks and make these really pretty rude statements on social media when they have no idea what goes into these decisions. And frankly, they were just plain wrong too. So I just want to bring that up because I've been thinking a lot about it. And again, I have nothing but admiration for the fact that I know that you're up half the night, you're consulting with people. I mean, I remember Bill Simmons, Mike Green, maybe not Andrew as much, but you know, the kind of effort they put in was just phenomenal. I mean, it really was. And so I just want to let those people out there that had complaints know that it's inappropriate and uncalled for.
Okay.
That was quite a fun snow day.
In case anyone is interested... on the district website, under superintendent, there is an actual layout of the process for people that have asked me in the past and a little FAQ section on how I go about determining snow days. Sometimes there's a school without power and nobody would ever know that. We might not have school and everybody else will. You can't open one, you can't open, you know, four schools and not another. So there are a lot of things, but if anybody is truly interested in the process, I've written it up because I've answered that question so many times that help yourself if you find interest in those things.
And you may want to use the app that the high school kids use and that's
Oh, it's a snow day calculator.
The snow day calculator. At the beginning of the day it was zero, by the end of, by like 7:00 o'clock at night it was at 66%, so.
I think I got almost 100 new followers that day.
There you go, there you go, okay. All right, anything else, Caroline? Anything else you're good? I'll say, quiet, okay. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session. In my opinion, having this discussion for the purpose of conducting strategy session in preparation for a grievance hearing would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Hold the committee.
What, second?
Oh, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Will you give a yes?
Director, yes.
Will you give a yes?
Wasman, yes. Star, yes.
Okay, we will not be coming back to open session. Have a nice evening.